Relax, Mayor.
Excellent. A notice is here by giving of a regular meeting. The Town of Anthony Council will be held on Monday, November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three, at five-thirty P M. Town Hall four-one, all drivers of Texas, seven-nine-two-one. For the purpose of considering the following agenda items. All agenda items are subject to action. The Town of Anthony Council deserves a right to meet in a closed session for consultation with attorney on any agenda item. Should the need arise and it's applicable pursuant to authorization by Title V, Chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code. The current time is five-thirty-three P M.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start forums, complaint zero. I'm going to begin with Councilwoman Stevens.
Here.
Councilman Weeks.
Yes.
Mayor Turner.
President.
Mayor Protona Farrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Flores.
Here.
And Councilman Chavez.
Here.
Thank you, we have a forum.
Excellent. All right, next our pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, four-point-zero, public comments and received petitions?
Nobody contacted me via email or anybody in the audience who likes to do public comment? No.
All right, excellent. Five-point-zero, approve the minutes of the following Town of Anthony Council meetings, eleven-thirteen-twenty-twenty-three, regular Town Council meeting. I need to, uh, correct it because it always gets here and then shows that it always here.
So what's your proof? Are we doing the second?
Second.
Second?
The second had approved with the correction that it stated.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes, five-zero.
Thank you, Council.
All right, six-point-zero, good business. Six-point-one, discussion, consideration, action on utility rate study by Melissa Lee consulting LLC for the Town of Anthony, Texas.
Okay, Council, give me a second. Do you want to notice it's new? Okay, Council, this item was brought back. It was table from the last meeting due to some questions you all had. I was able to respond them. I'm not sure if you all saw the packet. Um, the study in the past was done by the loan, which is loan number two, through Park Hill as a subcontractor, Ms. Alyssa. Um, she also did explain to me that the cost is more set, um, it's more true at the moment because in the past she did have to, um, pretty much cut some of the work she had done. Um, so that's what was the answer. But she also is here for her job we have about the study. And Henry, if we're gonna have any feedback as soon as he gets here about the proposal.
So how much was the loan that we did, the first one?
It was part of the, um, the O P F loan. It's a big loan.
I think it was twenty-two thousand.
No, but how much was it for this?
Oh, it's in account, sorry.
I think it was twenty-six thousand was what they charged you last year.
Yeah.
And this year should striking twenty-nine something.
It's in our. It's this one. So, in the last... Okay, so the study was twenty-six thousand three eighty-five, which was included in the loan of, which is the O P F. We have to be twenty-fourteen and twenty-sixteen. Um, and then this one is the twenty-nine thousand three eighty. And she did mention...
And this is made to a non-correct?
No.
No, well, we budgeted.
We're in a bush, are we in a budget form?
Yes. And that way it hasn't been started. We have to budget for it and then...
How much did exactly did we budget for?
Thirty-two thousand. Because her proposal, it's state and even Mark mentioned, because he helped me, um, just her travel costs.
So, so this is the final...
You want to handle all the presentation?
Uh, so this is the final cost and no more addition, additional cost to this?
Ms. Alyssa? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so I did provide, Council, the new cost for this proposal. I'm asking if there's going to be any additional cost?
Sure, great question, Council. Well, we've been thinking, thank you for the opportunity to discuss this proposal with you. Um, the proposed fee of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty dollars is for a complete cost of service and right design study as described in the proposal that includes to also address some policy issues that were requested, including designing, uh, tiered rates or conservation water rates where they're tiered designed, as well as evaluating using some additional consumable classes in your billing. And the proposed fee includes all of that, um, plus an additional, any out-of-pocket paralysing expenditure, uh, would be charged to the city at cost, and that's the only additional charge. The other item that I wanted to mention that is not included in that is to the extent the city needs any assistance with negotiations with, uh, the city of El Paso. Like your engineer has expressed that, that the city may need some help in those negotiations, but because we couldn't really predict what kind of company necessary, how much time that would involve, that's not included in this fee. Uh, to the extent the town, uh, requires that assistance, uh, we would, uh, do it a little bit at a time based on our, our, uh, current hourly rate. And before any work would be performed, uh, above that amount, above the twenty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty dollars, we would seek the city's approval, uh, prior to performing any work, um, on that hourly rate.
I think we should add too that any additional work or request should come from our engineer. It should come from our town because I didn't know anything about this film right now. So if they're wanting to do it, we're here to do a rate study, not to look at other things involving the city of El Paso, so...
The discussion with that sounds is the topic that we have discussed.
The one connecting to, uh...
Yes, um, we were, yes, and that's kind of what the topic was, something else with El Paso.
Okay. Yeah, but I mean, why are we discussing possibility of studies on something we haven't approved?
Gotcha. But I must mean that's what, uh, Mark may have mentioned to Ms. Alyssa, that our town is doing, that you all approve. I must mean he's just not happy for that idea in case we get additional charges, but it's not, it's just this stuff.
So that would be separate from the study itself, or so?
Yes, it is different.
That's what they said would be at the hour limit?
Yeah. Okay. Um, Council, I don't know if you all want to, um... No, I was going to say table because Henry's not here. So I don't know if you all have any further questions. I do know that Henry should be arriving soon in case he had any feedback.
Can we go ahead and take a listen until he gets here? I don't know, Matt, uh, would you mind holding on to our attorney show up?
I have no reason.
Let me, let me, let me ask, why are we holding for Henry?
Oh, in case council wants to...
Is there a contract?
He's a proposal and there's an attachment there in the packet for Ms. Alyssa to meet in services. But that's if you all want it or not. I mean, you all can make your decision. I just wanted to point that out.
Well, in order for it to be on the agenda, Henry's supposed to have reviewed it and located.
Yes.
So if it's on the agenda, that means that he didn't have any problems with the contract. So, um, I don't want Alyssa to have to stay on forever, so I'll move to approve with the fee of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty dollars.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Aye. All right, so our motion passes, five-zero.
Thank you, Ms. Alyssa.
Thank you very much. I look forward to working with you all with, yeah. Have a lovely evening.
You too. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Item six-point-two, discussion, consideration and action on a resolution authorizing council members, the mayor and town clerks as signatories to the Town of Anthony, Texas's Vantage Bank accounts.
So, Council, this is your resolution of the time the bank is requesting, uh, a resolution with the authorized signatories, um, signatories. Um, if you all have any questions, please let me know. Um, the resolution also states there's two signatures required for a recent vacuum, meaning this would be the chives or wires. Um, so that's what the resolution.
Did we already sign these things?
Same one and updated one.
Do you want to, we got two, we married?
Yes, we did one for the mayor and Ms. Stevens, but they want one without...
So for this one, what do we have to do? Just a motion?
Motion.
I'm motion to approve.
Seconded. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five-zero.
I do need to do roll call.
Okay.
Let me begin first with Mayor Protona Farrow.
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Weeks?
Yeah.
Uh, Councilman Chavez?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Flores?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, excellent. Uh, six-point-three, discussion, consideration and action on a resolution authorizing only certain designated town personnel to have, uh, account user access to the Town of Anthony, Texas accounts with Vantage Bank.
So this is the solution, Council, um, has been the procedure for the last, uh, four and a half years that I've been here. Um, it's just for you all to review. Any changes, please let me know. So the process that's been done is the town clerk does all the initiations, um, the wire, finance. Um, the chief has always been the review and approval, who's projecting that if he wants to people to review. Um, he only has E C H approval and online account access. He also monitor his business and does a lot. And then Ms. Jessica, she only has account access for her, for her, for her, for her, for her, for her. Um, this is what's being done for the last forty years. Again, uh, the bank is asking for, um, a resolution.
So what is Jessica's title?
Accounting manager.
Sure, did she have a team?
No, because she's our, uh, she's the accountant. She oversees our financials for the department head's, um, business. So we're the ones that, um, are responsible with our budget. And Ms. Jessica, of course, is the one that, you know, reconciles and make sure the banks are good.
Is this procedure written down somewhere? Do we have protocol, um...
So when it started, um, when the former town clerk left, I had to take over on the block. So again, this has been scattered, but you're saying written? Because of all the turnover, we never had a set procedure which checks that. We've always done it, but now that we have Jessica and...
We've always had a resolution. They just want an updated one.
I, I do, like, we do have a call.
And I, Council, we... The, uh, yeah, we should have one, and I think we do, but this one was tailored a little bit just to incorporate some of the checks and balances. Uh, as you can tell with regard to whether there's a second approval by the chief, uh, whether there's a second signature required by...
This isn't talking about protocol, this is talking about personnel?
Yes.
Authorizing personnel.
Yes.
We're talking about protocol. So who are we designating? Town clerk and chief?
So the last four years, it's always been myself with the initiations, um, internal transfers, opening and closing accounts, like for five minutes. Um, all she has done is check mine, review my submissions and give proofs that I'm doing the right back account and all. Um, it's always been me and him. And then, of course, the accountant is just oversees through the liver initiations and so... So this is what's been done for the last four and a half.
So we're asking for a resolution authorizing the town clerk, the chief and the accounting manager to have account user access to the Town of Anthony?
Yes, for the bank.
So all three of you have to sign?
No.
That you reviewed?
What do you mean, when we authorize?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we have our checks and balances, but in backend, we all have to sign. Like when I initiate, I have to sign date, chief signs date when we approve reviews, and then Ms. Jessica also signs.
So there's a resolution that you have in hand, state, town clerk, chief, accounting manager? Or does it say certain designated town personnel?
It's what, what I send on the packet?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, it has those in there.
You want to hold it?
Yes. So I only have account user access. I don't have approval actually initially or authorized. So that's the clarity. So all I have is viewing access on the bank. All three of us have viewing access.
So this is just for account user access?
Yes.
Yes.
To answer, uh, my understanding, uh, Council Stevens, when they approve, like to get the second approval, uh, at least, do I understand you're wrong? About what it's done through the online, it's not, it's an online approval? Second approval as opposed to a written? So you'll see on the resolution, if you look, I don't know if you all have your packet, but it's up there. Uh, when it's ref, when it's referencing approval by the chief, again, that, that's done electronically. Now, when it's referencing a second signature, obviously, for example, on a, on a check or something, or a wire transfer, you know, it would require, uh, obviously, you know, writing.
Yes.
Is Manny asking that we have the, the names, the individual names, is that what this really is? Is there a C Y A for their?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Um, I was thinking, but, but, Henry, should I just put town clerk, chief police or county manager? I mean, I put the names because...
No, because they won't.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted...
Yeah, and then you the one, anybody that's signing is claiming they're the town clerk.
I just wanted to ask.
So there's, obviously, there, there is a change, then we obviously have to, and we...
Uh, another example is if I'm open and close account, but prior reading authorization from Town Council. So I don't close, I don't open unless we bring it to council, which we've done with the ball of branch we've been having and all the other stuff. So that's kind of how we can operate. So we want to have it right now, right now.
This is, Council Weeks and Mayor, also, is, is really to kind of give the bank a better idea, like, hey, like to open and close an account that way you don't have, um, for example, Val just on, on her own, doing those things without getting some approval from you all, some minutes, a resolution, something in writing. Is this more of a rocks out way for them to ensure that there's several eyes looking at something, or maybe just one or two?
Yes.
And again, we could have just listed the, the individuals and not put the additional checks and balances in there. But Val and I went through it and I felt it was, uh, more prudent to have access to the bank. When they get this resolution, they're put on notice, okay, hey, there's two signatures required on water cuts, for example, right?
We just have to remember that any time anybody changes, if anything ever changes, we have to update these.
Yes, exactly. I forgot to add that. So again, from after May, you know, there's new council and new mayor and new clerk will make sure these get brought up for from that up to date to the bank as well. Who's, who needs to be removed, who needs to be added and all of that.
But it is important to definitely have those names.
Yes.
The name.
So I moved to approve a resolution authorizing that town clerk Valerie, uh, chief of police Carlos, and accounting manager Jessica, you put the last name, have, uh, account user access to the Town of Anthony, Texas accounts with Vantage Bank.
As, uh, Council, we said we could add to the, uh, uh, motion to, as, as, uh, to perform the transactions as, as set up in the, in the resolution.
So if you see down here, Sean, it says, if you would like to do this part.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, but it wasn't on here. That's what the intent is, so... Somebody wants to add that, but I'm just...
Just reading it from the agenda.
Right.
All in favor?
Does anybody want to add that piece if they want to?
All in favor?
It's time.
Opposed? Aye.
So...
All right, motion passes, five-zero.
I'm going to do a roll call, Mayor.
Okay.
Let me begin with Mayor Protona Farrow.
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Stevens?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Councilman Weeks?
Yep.
Thank you. Councilwoman Chavez?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Flores?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Real quick, before we go, we're going to, one on two reports. Before we go into the reports, can I just make a clarification that, I don't know where I read that I was presenting, but Valerie just showed me its, its current, uh, previously. Okay. All right, excellent, thank you. All right, so, seven-point-zero, reports. Uh, seven-point-one, finance, Councilwoman Weeks?
I did not meet with Jessica last Wednesday. Out of town, forgot. Was there anything with Jessica?
Yes.
I mean, where I talked about.
All right, excellent. Uh, seven-point-two, streets, Councilman Chavez?
Well, uh, Mr. Easthead, I mean, uh, the crew, the crew removed the dead cat from Washington Street. Oh, my. Also, uh, I want to give these guys a lot of credit. There's only two guys, three guys that were working on the street on Third Street, on the store, the store club that the store keeps having. I don't know exactly what's going on, but I got to give credit to these guys because they, they did a good job. All we need to know is to cover the holes. And they're really, they did a really good job. Now, I think I should...
That they did, that they did. And I remember you said telling me about the issue and I thought I was going to lose sleep over it, but you didn't have to. They got, they got it taken care of in their heartbeat, so I was happy. So very good, yes, the crew's done well. Uh, seven-point-three, parks, Councilwoman Flores?
Well, let's see. They do, what's the, they also do a great job. Drive around, you see, uh, they've got grass on the municipal park, grew dead trees on the municipal park. Restaurants on baseball fields are not open.
All right, excellent, very well done.
They're not there. While it kept, it has a awful lease.
I have a question on the parks. Where are those lights on? Are people renting the field already or are just on the touch of touch?
Yeah, people are renting this.
People are renting this.
Cause I, I've never seen anybody out in there a, at all.
That's not a day.
Or the day for it, because the lights are, the, the lights are on for a long time.
Yeah, so we are at the beginning of last month. We did a try, eh, a stage, we turned them on to let people know that they were on. We had some people calling and saying the lights were on and we did talk them, it was for them to use it. We ended up going from six lamps to three to minimize the, the, the cost. And we noticed the, we noticed, uh, there is enough light for people to still use the field, for instance. We did that with an intent of people finding out that they could use it. So as of right now, people have been renting the, the field. So that's going to be, um, uh, some fees that are going to offset the, the charges that we get for light.
All right, I was just checking, because those lights are on until ten o'clock and I don't see it. I've never seen anybody on the field, but they're using it, good.
The day before?
Yeah.
I was excited. Uh, I noticed that, uh, the parks gates were closer for a bit. Are they open up again or are they still closed?
Eh, oh, the, I decided to, to close the gates because we, we had a lot of issue with vandalism. And it was mostly with the cars parking on the rear back. One of the things that I have done have been coming to the parks, eh, from, from time to time, like once every three, four days.
Right.
And I have seen a lot of people park on the sides. But, so, eh, I've taken the initiative and talked to people. Eh, a lot of the people that I have talked to are residents from the town. And they told me that they are happy because they can walk on the back. Eh, before they were afraid to be in the back because there was people parking cars and not doing nice things. So they were afraid to go. Eh, like, right now we're working on putting lighting. Eh, once we fix that issue, we don't pass electric, eh, we might, eh, look at the option on opening the gates again.
But just, yeah, I understand. Cause I, I've seen people, kids playing like, uh, practicing with football tag, you know, and doing soccer drills back there. Uh, parents would park their cars and put their kids in the park and stuff. And then we take them, because I, I walk the park sometimes and I don't see that, so I was kind of wondering if that was going to be an issue.
Yeah, well, right now there's some projects that are working, eh, on that area where we're looking to make it a parking lot and designate the, the U for, eh, a trail. So, eh, that's still in the works. But once we move forward with that, eh, and we work with the lights, then I'll, I'll give you guys a tell.
Well, that makes sense to you. I've seen cars drive through there like, it's the Indy five-hundred-two, so they're flying out through there and that's something.
Yeah. All right, excellent. Thank you. Uh, water and sewer, Councilwoman Stevens?
Well, we already heard it, we've got the sewer club. And then he said, he said that the crew for preventative maintenance and wells and we just wanted, like, I'm not sure what they're called, but he also raised motors on the wells. Good job.
Thank you for keeping running, perfect. Uh, Anthony, Texas Police Department, Mayor Protona Farrow?
Uh, I say to all, uh, helping my report, um, I was looking at this, uh, let me, yeah, talk a little bit about this. We had, uh, last October, we had three assaults. Uh, there were six pop, tax stations, motor vehicle from Palm, that was thirty-six. There was one bravery, one bravery, two deaths, um, taking it's Christmas time. Uh, criminal mischief, that was two. Uh, let's see. Recovery, best of our convicts are seventeen, so that's got a little bit. Also, we have, let's see, six, the warrants, three, what were legal accidents, there were five, and a killer, so number one, no driver's license and insurance for eighty-seven.
Wow.
Yeah, so that's kind of it, yeah. It's actually last, it was more, last one.
Are you the second one?
Last one.
Maybe. We catch him again?
Are they, are they just coming into state?
The same people, same people.
Surprised.
On the, uh, other, other reports regarding the one that received, uh, let's see, they collected six dollars, no, six hundred and seventy, six, seven dollars and sixty cents from inbound. Uh, the total arrest, there was five felonies, fourteen misdemeanors, two E D O S.
What, what's E D O S?
E D O S?
E D O S.
And there's two catch orders?
There's two of them. Uh, total citation, four hundred fifty-nine, twelve pieces, we were forty-seven. And also, I'm not sure reports, uh, last month they collected thirty thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and zero cents. That's all I have.
How much?
Chief, you got anything else to speak?
Uh, just to keep an eye out, people that own Hyundai's and Kia's, they're the number one cars that are being stolen right now. Um, people in TikTok have already identified the vulnerabilities and therefore people have been stealing those vehicles to China, hotcakes. Um, I know the home weather's coming out. We're asking for the citizens not to warm up their cars unless they have that auto start. Um, it is a violation of law and there are people running with the keys inside it, so obviously we'll be out there trying to enforce that with these people. Um, also, we do have the options coming up this Saturday, so anybody that's broke heart, Christmas is around the corner, invite them, get them covered, your kid.
You need good tires, sir, chief? You need, you don't know?
I haven't had a chance to log it.
The other logic is they're still in Kia's. What would we need to be able to sell Kia?
Cause they're used to it.
I mean, uh, Toyotas.
They're, they're into a good room. Kia's.
Kia's. I guess, it makes sense, but, yeah. Shaving. That's right.
All right, seven-point-eight, uh, administration. Administratively, everything's been going well. We've had, uh, a lot of good turnout for a lot of our aspects. We did have the, uh, the turkey and the Thanksgiving food donation giveaway. That was very helpful, that turned out well. Uh, we had a good turnout for that.
How many? How many did you get out?
Uh, we actually ended up getting out a little over a hundred. A little over a hundred, so it was beneficial. We, we had a good, we had a good turnout, and, uh, we had a lot of helpers, so we might need to cut down the number of helpers next year, but, uh, yeah, it was really good, so.
Sixty turkeys were donated by Ayuda.
Thank you.
And, uh, the officers, uh, I just want to take the time to recognize Officers Velazquez, where did this, Officer Velazquez.
Oh.
Um, Co-Enforcement Ramirez, Danny Morales, uh, Officer Felo Magonado, Officer Garcia and Edida, they all donated to be able to buy all the, uh, all the dry staples. So they, they all donated a hundred dollars and were able to buy all the dry staples.
Oh, nice.
So. Just so the community can know that the officers did pitch in and gave money out of their pocket to be able to
Yeah.
And then, of course, Mayor and City Council, or City, uh, under portion is.
So it was an excellent effort by all of us, which is, you know, the best aspect that you can hope for, so. Alright, uh, this is just a quick status report on the food truck park, it's eleven twenty-six point three, uh, having it put together here. So for the status, the schedule's on, uh, everything's on schedule, resources, scope and cost and feedback. Uh, those are a little skewed, just given that we have a few things outstanding at the moment, um. So for the objectives, everybody knows, any key issues, timeline has been adjusted due to unforeseen events, we did have to move the timeline around a little bit, but we can discuss that a little bit later. Uh, the project, uh, should remain on schedule just due to the amount of slack that there was in the other outrunning deliverables. So working within the slack, we should be able to still have it on schedule. Um, possible risks, contractor issues, just dependent, uh, and allocations of capital improvement funds is outlined by the Public Works Department head. You guys have a proposal for some of the public works, uh, for some capital improvement to go into the parks, next page. So accomplishments, of course, is the huge one, I gotta do a shout out to the chief and Isael on that one. Uh, so the contacts have been made, a lot of discussions being entered into, uh, food trucks, individual owners of food trucks, as well as the individuals from Boney's Food Line. Uh, and, uh, Isael did put out an R F P with the help of everybody, uh, for the required development, and that's been placed, submissions, we're still honoring submissions for that. A couple of the upcoming, uh, upcoming tasks, review and grade all the submissions from the R F P, so once we get all the submissions in and the submission deadline closes, we're gonna have to grade them. And then we do have to approve the capital improvements to the park, that's gonna be through you guys once we bring it forward. Uh, other than that, no other action items exist. Once the bid is selected, though, the earned value analysis with the variance analysis, performance index and project percentage analysis can be presented along with this. So that's why I, everything's still a little, you know, good, but we don't have the exacts.
If I may add, Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I do work on the website, council, um, I am trying to mo- uh, do a little bit of, I don't know, more, a little more engagement with whoever uses our, our website. So if they go into our little flyer and they click on the food truck information, they'll be able to see the R F P, uh, that was, um, that Isael kind of told me what I posted with the, um, the packet of what Isael is needing for submission for him to review, um. So if anybody is interested, it's on the website. You can go to email, so I'm trying to do that, the leap year event, where to go. Kind of go through our website, and then go to other links to get to where they need to go.
Do we have any updates on the leap year event? Have they started marketing?
In all honesty, yes, they, they haven't done the exact marketing yet, they've reached out to the private vendors and individuals and everything of that nature, I did, uh, talk with Gina today even. Uh, I just have to approve two other factors, and then she can go ahead and start giving the marketing out there, so.
Three months away.
Oh, yeah, no, no, they've, they've been, they've, they've got everything set to go, all they have to do is just push the button at this point, thank goodness. But, yeah, they've gotten, they've done a lot of excellent work, uh, we've done walkthroughs with Chief Isael just to ensure public safety within the area and everything of that nature as well, so they're being very thorough about, you know, how they're knowing about this, so.
Do we have entertainment?
Yes, the entertainment has been booked, and, uh, they're actually reaching out for even more local entertainment, so if anybody has a van, then, then, yeah, so they can, uh, you know, we can, if they want to submit, then they can go ahead and submit, and I believe Gina's, uh, setting up all that, too.
Do we know the, the, the entertainment?
Yes, we do have the entertainment, we do know, but I want to let Gina do that under the marketing aspect, just in case anybody pulls out, so I would hate to say a name right now, and then, you know, they go to her, hey, we're pulling out for one reason or another. Uh, so, um, as soon as she, as soon as I can go ahead and approve all those other factors, and she'll hit that button, and then word goes out to everybody and all's good.
Theoretically, if I bring a van.
Yes.
We'll be all the people.
Well. Well, no, I don't know, I'd have to actually double check, I think she's spreading around some aspects on that. There you go. So, but yes, entertainment is already set up and everything of that nature, so it should be very, very soon that you see all the marketing going forward to it, and we have, uh, vendors that are already contacted and some that are lining up, so, uh, beer and wine sales will also be taken care of, that'll be handled by the town.
So that'll be, there'll be, um, revenue from the town?
Yes.
Sorry, Mayor, it would be the food pantry.
Right, right.
No.
They're going to.
They can, so.
Yeah. Well, they can. For purchase and everything, yeah, so, but we're checking on a couple of the vendors, but all's well and good with the leap year event, so.
We keep the updates.
Alright, excellent. So, eight point zero, the town council will go into closed executive session pursuant to section five-five-one point zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney. Governmental body may not conduct a private consultation with the attorney except when govern- when the governing body seeks the advice of the attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or resettlement of third and/or a matter in which, to duty of the attorney to the governmental body, there are the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct in the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts of this chapter. Eight point one, town council will go into closed session to seek advice concerning contemplated litigation related to Vantage Bank. The current time?
Yes.
The current time is six ten P M.